It's 7:02 on the public hearing. Notice was hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in the town of Stafford in the town hall located at 8903 Route 237, Stafford, New York, on the 21st day of July, 2025, commencing at 7:00 p.m. to give citizens the opportunity to consider interpretation of the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals must determine whether Section 182-33 subdivision B of the town code applies to the residents within 100 feet of agricultural-based business located at 8610 Route 237, Stafford, New York. The purpose of this meeting is, the hearing is to allow citizens the opportunity to provide their views on this question. All persons interested in this matter of this hearing will be entitled to be heard at that time and place. As Crocker's are asking for the interpretation, we will allow the attorney for Mr. Crocker to speak first.
Thank you very much, members of the board. Matt Fitzgerald with Phillips Layle on behalf of the advocate seeking the interpretation. So, high level, if I just to set the stage for this, it's much the benefit of the board as are members of the public. The only question before this board is a purely legal one. It has nothing to do with the day-to-day operations of the property. It's purely a question of whether or not Section 182-33 applies to the operations on this site, nothing else. Everything else in terms of alleged code violations and whatnot are not currently before this board. So I've got two very brief arguments I'd like to make. Obviously, we put a lot in writing for you, but the two simplest ones, just to boil this all down. One, that this was already decided by this board. This was decided by this board back at the end of 2020 and the beginning of 2021 in terms of what variances would and would not be needed for structures on this property. And it related back to the classification of the property as an agricultural-based business. And if you've got one of our filings handy, you flip to Exhibit C and you look at the very bottom of the very first page, you can see there's some discussion. And the issue with CEC's application for a variance of a setback depends on how the property was defined when a special use permit was issued for the property. That's from the meeting minutes from the town's union meeting back in 2020. And so some months were spent debating this, figuring it out, what does it mean? And the conclusion that was correctly reached was that the usual setback requirements for an agricultural-based business applied. There were note, there was not a 100-foot buffer requirement in place, and that should have been the end of it. Now unfortunately, there was a complaint submitted, a notice of violation issued, and what I don't want to have happen is that your decision back in 2020, that the door gets reopened so that a new Article 78 could be challenged essentially to try and undo what you approved back in 2020 and 2021. So that's argument one. You've already decided this, so you should say that the notice of violation goes against a prior decision by this board, and that's the end of it. The second argument is that even setting that aside, your decision in 2020 and 2021 was correct. And the reason it's correct is, I'll give two brief examples. One, when you look at the actual caption heading, it deals with stapling of farm animals, and you think to yourself, well, that's a little odd because obviously nothing happening on the Crocker's property deals with stapling of farm animals. So why is it captioned that way? Why is this little section of the code just floating over here on its own that deals with this weird subset of setback requirements? And what I would point you to is Section 182-21 of the town code. That deals with the permitted uses in agricultural residential districts, which is where we're located. And if you look at 182-21A1, permitted uses include agricultural uses and all sound agricultural practices and similar activities are carried out in compliance with, and it cites to 182-33. So that's the point of 182-33. It's to say which agricultural uses and sound agricultural practices are permitted in this zoning district. That does not apply to this use, to this use of the property. And you know that because if you go to 182-21B, we're a use permitted by, not as a right, but by a special use permit. This is what you decided back in 2020, 2021, is we're permitted by a special use permit. And if you look down to the subsection three, the commercial use is in there, E, agricultural-based business, absolutely no reference to 182-33, the section of the interpretation that we're talking about here today. So again, you decided this already. Deciding it again now, all that does is reopen the door to an Article 78 proceeding to challenge structures that have been in place for years now at this point. Secondly, even if you hadn't decided it already, the decision that you did reach previously was the right one. Your code is very clear. That section of the code that institutes the 100-foot setback is not meant to apply to agricultural-based businesses. Again, you decided that previously, it was the right decision. Happy to answer any questions the board may have, but otherwise, I think our paper speaks for themselves on that point, and happy to answer any other questions.
Excuse me, will you all introduce yourselves because there are no name tags in front of you, and frankly, I don't know any of you.
Okay, you can do that.
Robert Chapman.
Pardon me?
Robert Chapman.
Krista Gold.
Mike Lathan, chairman.
Barbara Lee, secretary.
Tim Thomas.
Sherry Snell.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions here? Okay.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, excuse me. My name is Ian Shavitz. I'm from the law firm of Phillips and Mathias. Excuse me, and I'm here with the amputator Tony Prince, who is the neighbor of the property facility that is actually being harmed by this fertilizer being stored within 100 feet of his property. The issue before you is very straightforward. 182-33 says, there shall be no bulk storage of minor fertilizer or similar odor or dust-producing substances unless certain restrictions are observed. One of those restrictions, and I quote, is no such storage shall take place within 100 feet of a lot containing a residential use. It's about as clear and absolute as it can be. It's a standalone section, it's straightforward. But just as important as what Section 182-33 says is what it doesn't say. It does not say, and nowhere in the town code does it say, that agricultural businesses are exempt from the 100-foot requirement. Mr. Fitzgerald took you all over to various sections, but none of those sections, and that's what he really had to do to confuse the issue because it is so straightforward. None of those sections anywhere say agricultural business is exempt from this requirement. And if it did say that, Mr. Fitzgerald would have pointed to that. And there's really no reason why that there would be such an exemption. I think we can all agree that Section 182-33 is to protect residences who live within 100 yards of a, you know, a facility that may be storing fertilizer or dust. So Mr. Crocker is asking the board to find that neighbors of farms would be protected from fertilizer dust, but neighbors of agricultural businesses would not be protected from that very same dust? It makes no sense, and it's nowhere in the code to even suggest that. Mr. Fitzgerald says that, you know, that this is, you know, you rehashing and making a decision that you've already made. I went back and looked at the minutes. There is not a single reference to Section 182-33. There's not a single reference to the 100-foot setback. What was decided years back was that Mr. Crocker's business was an agricultural business, not a commercial business. We agree with that. There's no contention, but the thing is, that doesn't matter. It would only matter if there was an exemption in the town code, and there wasn't. Now, I wanted to address finally some of the points raised in the prior work sessions by this board. First, it was suggested that 182-33 does not apply to fertilizer because the section heading is stapling of animals. Mr. Fitzgerald made that same point to Stephen. But it's the language that's within the provision that governs. If you were to say the section heading doesn't say fertilizer, then you'd essentially be ignoring what the provision says, which is that no bulk fertilizer or other dust-producing substances can be stored within 100 feet of a residential property. You can't read that out of the code. There was also a suggestion that that section, maybe it was outdated, and maybe that it should have been brought up to today's standards. Maybe so, maybe not, but the job of this board is to interpret the law as it's written within the code, not to interpret the law the way the board or board member believes it should be. It's the town board's job to amend the code, and if the town board wants to make the decision that you can store fertilizer within 100 feet of a residential property where there's an agricultural business, that's the town board's prerogative. But the law has to be interpreted the way that it's written in the code as of today. Third, there was discussion about whether this town, when they approved the variance the 30 feet from the 40-foot requirement, knew the building was going to be used for fertilizer, and they're somehow implicitly approved this use. Not correct. When you look at the application, fertilizer's never mentioned. It did talk about storage of dry goods, but fertilizer is never mentioned in that application. I have a copy of it if anyone would like to look at it. And finally, there's a discussion, there was a discussion that there were multiple town code violations, and there might have been some that were more appropriate for the zoning enforcement officer at the site rather than the one that was cited. Our position here is absolutely, there were many other violations there. However, those should have been cited in addition to, not instead of, the violation that was cited. And those include buildings without building permits, buildings without site plan approval, not repaving an area that was supposed to be re-granced, and using the area for not to use, including a dust-producing use. So there are multiple other violations that have not been resolved, not a single one has been resolved actually. So those are the ones that should be brought in addition to, but not instead of, the violation that the zoning enforcement cited and that is before this board tonight. Thank you.
Okay, we have three people that have asked to speak tonight. First is Sandy Swanson. And Sandy, before we can say that, for everybody's sake, you are aware of the rules for the...
Three minutes.
Yeah.
I don't have three minutes worth of...
What's that?
I don't have three minutes.
Okay. And stand up and state your name because we need that for the court's denographer.
Do we have someone to keep each other's time? Do you all do that? My name is Sandy Swanson, and I think I signed a sheet saying that I was going to speak, but since I am, I'd like to just reinforce the beautiful comments that are made by Tony's lawyer about this rather heinous situation.
Sandy, this isn't what we're here for.
No, I'm finished with my...
This is just our interpretation of this. It's not to go into long dissertations about...
I have no long dissertation.
Okay, just so we're...
She has three minutes. She has two minutes and 30 seconds. So I was moved to speak here, too. I think it's time to go on the sheet. I think it's very clear that Tony has a wonderful backing from his lawyers and from all of the people in the town, or many, many of the people in the town, and I hope that this board is going to be listening to them and understanding what a difficult situation he is in, and actually all of the people that live around Morganville area, and the danger if he never, ever studies the situation in Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Sandy.
What?
Or not in South Carolina.
You're speaking. No, it's not the wrong subject. It's the subject. And so anyway, if you haven't looked into that, or if you haven't heard about it, you might study it because it relates specifically to what's happening here in our town. Thank you.
Next, Kathy Worthington.
Kathy Worthington, I printed this code off out of our book, and I was a little confused as well because it does say 500 feet, then it does say 100 feet with a residential use. What I couldn't find was the variances that were given in the past. The variances in the special permit goes per property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. At the last workshop, it was also mentioned the person that did the inspection, has it been re-inspected? Wasn't it going to be re-inspected, or no?
That's not earlier than this.
That wasn't, I thought that was part of your workshop.
No.
Oh, okay. So I guess I'm really confused too because it does say here, no storage of bulk storage fertilizer within 100 feet, but also I believe it was a little closer than 100 feet. I'm not sure if it's been actually measured. That's all.
Okay, Sandy. Barry Garigen.
100 feet is 100 feet, and the prince is living in a residence. That's all I have to say.
Sir, could you stand up and just spell your name so we can take it down on the court reporter?
G-A-R-I-G-E-N.
Barry.
Barry.
Barry Garigen.
Did anybody hear what he said?
100 feet is 100 feet, and the prince is, I don't know, living in a residential residence.
Okay, the lesson we had here is Betkar.
I actually, I'm Betkar, and I signed in and checked that I wished to speak because I didn't want to be in a position of not being permitted to speak. So I was just covering the bases, and I don't, I am not aware of your rules, and so...
They're the town board's rules.
I wasn't being aggressive or intending to make you feel defensive. They are your rules. You represent the town board.
Correct.
So they're your rules, and I don't know what they are, so I'm a little loathe to continue to speak because I may be out of line. But I would like to have somebody explain to me why Eastern Carolina Cracker is considered an ag business when what they are is an industrial fertilizer distribution center. Agriculture grows something. It may be a business that supports agriculture, but I don't think that that should be viewed as the steward of the land kind of concept that people have when they consider farming and agriculture. It is a business, and I would like to think that this board and this town finds the health and welfare of its constituents and its residents as important with whether this company, which some of us took umbrage with from the very beginning, whether it's in the minutes or not, because sometimes things weren't in the minutes, but we took umbrage with the development of this business over Genesee County's largest potable aquifer. And why it was ever permitted, once it changed hands from Buckley to Eastern Carolina Cracker, I would love to have explained to me because it is not in our well-being, consideration of our constituency well-being, that this company grow so unabridged as it has and the virtual doorstep of Tony Prince and the other neighbors. And it certainly affects the rest of us. If you aren't familiar with what Sandy's talking about, the Weston Salem fertilizer fire, and I asked for a petition to be read into the minutes a couple of months ago. I don't know if they're there. Well, let me finish.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, well, so here goes three plus. Would you be willing to read this? It puts us in danger. If this thing goes up in flames, a three-mile radius is in physical danger.
Thank you.
People need to know that in this community, not enough people come out and actually hear what's going on.
That's it?
I did not sign up to speak, but could I speak?
Sure.
I'm Tony Prince. I think there's a number of people that were going to speak that didn't go to sign up or see a sign up sheet, so they may have others that are going to speak.
Okay, so everyone pretty much, I didn't notice who I am. I'm Tony Prince, and I live in the house directly to the east of Carolina Mr. Crocker's. Since they purchased property, I have raised a family there, and now we have my grandsons here. He's there with my daughter at the moment, they're living in the house also. Crocker's has asked you to decide whether or not to store your fertilizer 100 foot of a property line. Whether to store your bulk fertilizer 100 foot of my property line is okay. Close to the fertilizer my property, the more the dust lands on my property. And even though it's stored inside buildings, the loading and unloading of the fertilizer creates dust, and the trucking of the fertilizer creates dust, and it all lands on my property. Over the past 10 to 15 years, we've noticed an increase in dust on our property. We never had this problem before. As they built, we've had more and more dust. Slow down. As we've, as they built, I'm sorry, as they built, as they've built and expanded, we experienced more and more dust. And then with the dust, we have also started not noticing moss and algae on the property. I have pictures here if you'd like to see them, that show the pool, show the ditch. I don't know if you want us to see them, or hey, not to know the next one. Let's go in. This is what it looks like. I'll get a message out to you guys. I'm going to go ahead and share them. That's the ditch and cars in our green, and you can notice the color is the same as the color of the pool. That's the color of the patio.
Tony, keep your voice up, please.
That's the color of the patio, that is supposed to be green, red, not green. This is how my pool looks right open every year. And that's how the pool color looks after part of the summer. Green algae comes in the pool. Green algae's been raised before, the algae's been raised before. I think it depends on what they're showing. So, well, that's it. Anyone want to hear us picture? I should, I should leave it. It's about half feet. And I can get it after I move. I'll be right there. The garden is on our full cover, it's in our full, it's on the patio, it's on the cars. Due to those concerns, we paid a couple of thousands, several thousand dollars to have an independent lab to study on property. We had them test, be the licensed environmental professional, an independent testing lab, test the property, tested the dust on property. Those results proved what we knew, fertilizer from CEC was landing on our property and causing moss and algae growth. The test results, if you need to see them, are in the first complaint letter so you can see them. If you look at the pictures, you can see the stormwater runoff and the green algae out of the pool cover. As a result of this, we no longer spend time outside, especially in windy days. We rarely use our pool or our patio. We spend most of the time in the house to avoid the dust. We no longer open the windows at night. We used to open the house at night, we don't do it anymore. We won't open the windows. The house is essentially kept closed. We don't, we run our, we now have installed a central air conditioning home to keep the house cool so you can't open the windows in the house. And then air conditioning system, we have a four-inch Marv 13 filter, which I'm sure most of you don't know what that is, but it's a high-efficiency filter. We also have two air purifying systems in the house that run up full-time. All the air in the house is turned all the time, the fans never shut off. There are two HE filters to filter out any dust or any particulate in the air. Also, we have my grandson's house, I think I mentioned it to you guys before, he's living there with my daughter. I'm really extremely concerned about the impacts to my, that this dust that's had on my family is, will have on my family in future. The exact circumstances is why the law of prohibiting or prohibiting fertilizer from being stored in bulk is meant to be, meant to protect the family adjacent to property. CEC's Crocker's argument is that, again, as Ian mentioned, that if I were living next to a farm, I'd be fine. I live next to them, I'm not, I'd be protected against a farm, I'm not protected against them. And I don't seem, think that makes any sense whatsoever. It seems kind of ridiculous, not really logical. In response to the original complaint letter we sent, the storage of fertilizer in the response was, in response to that all fertilizers can be moved from the buildings to the 100-foot property line. It was supposed to have come back in April. To my knowledge, it has never happened. Fertilizers never left the buildings. Same buildings still there, still creating dust, still raining on the property. The fertilizer stored is still being moved, generating dust and harmful from leaving my family. The code restricts the fertilizer on 100-foot residents, there is no exception to this. This code is meant to protect the resident's property, residence, property and the residents from hazard that they are just caused by the fertilizer. I have to mention potential health impacts of breeding fertilizer. Everything that you've just been told, the picture you've seen are the reasons this code exists. Everyone that thinks that fertilizer, dust, or dust in general is not hazardous, I would remind you that asbestos is also in the air. And asbestos is actually a mineral ground for the earth, so don't tell me it's organic, don't tell me it's not going to hurt you. Any dust is there for you. And I don't think my family or I should be stopped breathing it because a neighbor can't control this dust, and that fertilizer's thrown in the 100-foot of my property. As Ian also mentioned, we don't give this rule right now, but there are other code violations on the property that have never been addressed. That would be construction of buildings without permits, farming foundations without permits, building 17 right behind the house, they were supposed to never break, they raised the rig, they did. They're also supposed to install a perimeter, that also matters. I would like to request from the board and from the town that you address these violations as soon as possible. And also like to address, like to have one of the board members also attend the site inspection. I'm not sure that I can be scheduled or why it hasn't been scheduled, but those violations need to be addressed, and they just haven't happened. It's been what, four months, six months, it's a little reserved. So I don't understand what the code to hang of is, or why it's being held up. That's all I got. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria. I am the eldest daughter of Anthony and Lori Prince. I grew up in Stafford. It is my childhood home.
You have a little closer to the quote.
I'm sorry. But it is my childhood home, and actually, most recently, I needed to move back to New York to have my baby. And so right now, I'm living right next to the Crocker facility, and in choosing to move home, there were several concerns about being back next to Crockers. And the reason for that was the exposure that my son would receive to the fertilizer and the chemicals next door, with how close they are to the house. And it was to the point where my significant mother, Austin, and I actually had to decide and make a choice. Where we were living, I had to decide if I wanted to deliver at a hospital that was not equipped to handle a birth, or expose my son to chemicals, or come home, actually deliver at a hospital that could actually, you know, deliver a baby and expose him to those chemicals. So it was a really hard decision for the both of us, but we felt like it was the only decision we could make to have medical staff nearby that could equip with a birth. And it's something no parent should have to decide between, and as a result, you know, moving next door, I've witnessed how this has exposed my sister for the past 25 years and the health concerns that she now has from moving next door to Crockers. I ask all of you here on the board to think about some key services that the town is here to help provide for the residents, and there are three that I would actually like to bring to your attention this evening. One of them is overseeing essential services that directly impact resident's safety and quality of life. The second is enforcing local laws and ordinances covered a broad range of areas such as zoning, noise, building codes, all aimed at protecting residents' safety, health, and welfare. And the third is taking action to address things like... And the third is taking action to address things like fire and health hazards. How are these things being upheld in this town? Especially when a town enforcement officer found that Crocker was illegally storing fertilizer within 100 feet of the property line and was ordered to cease that storage of fertilizer, specifically to protect me and my family. Crocker is now asking the board to find that this 100-foot storage protection only applies to neighbors of properties where agricultural practices are occurring as part of an agricultural business. This doesn't make any sense because why is my three-year-old baby, who would be protected if we lived next to a farm, but not a business? Why is he exposed to one but not the other? Explain to me, my family, people in this town, how is this okay and doesn't go against the board service to access against health hazards? Again, if I live next to a farm, I could sit outside. I could bring my baby outside. We could enjoy the sunshine. But at least I would know I'm not 100 feet of fertilizer being stored. You've seen the pictures my dad has shown you. Would you let your kids, your grandkids breathe these in? Because I wouldn't want to force anyone to breathe in fertilizer dust. And of course not, because we shouldn't be forced to. So I'm asking all of you, pleading, just to uphold the violations and for the town to do its job. It's to enforce the list of other violations that the site, because doing that again is not a day. Thank you.
I guess that's it.
My name is Juliana Prince.
Juliana, will you step up? You fell off at the end, so I'm going to be up at the beginning.
Hi, my name is Juliana Prince. I have resided at 86037 Moreville Road for the last 24 years of my life. I am the youngest daughter of Anthony and Lori Prince. And with being the youngest, I am the one who has been exposed to the increase in dust production from the Crocker's facility to long this. Growing up, I saw the Crocker's facility property grow larger and larger. And with them growing, I also saw them get closer and closer to my parents' property. With the increase in their size, also came the increase in the dust production that blows on my parents' property. Again, like my sister said, as you saw in the pictures, the dust is truly everywhere. It's on our house, our pool, our patio, our cars, you name it, there's dust. Growing up there, there's always been a running joke in my family about health, like health problems that I've experienced that no one else in my family has experienced. Starting around age 13 until now, I have been to countless doctors. Some of those include gastrointestinal, allergist, hematologist, pulmonologist. And with all those doctor's appointments, I can't explain to you the amount of testing I have gone through, procedures, I've been put on restrictive diets. I'm now 25, and that truly is a lot of doctors. I wasn't until the last hearing that Ms. Geisler stood in front of everyone and explained medical issues that her daughters have been going through. And it was after that meeting, my family, I realized that I unfortunately experienced the same issues that her daughters do. And one thing we both have in common is we live next to the Crocker's facility and we've been growing up there with this increased dust production. Mr. Shavitz has repeatedly said that the town law prohibits storing the fertilizer and other dust-producing substances within 100 feet of our property. And yet, the town has allowed them to continue to do so. Please explain to me how you could ever find that this law should not apply to Crockers because he's a business? I just, we don't understand. Like my sister said, no sense, I'm sorry. Does it make sense and is it okay for Crockers to threaten my health along with my new nephew? Like my sister said, this makes no sense. Don't let Crockers continue to ignore our town laws and get away with whatever they want.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess that's enough. So my name is Andy Hirsch. So this is my sister, my brother-in-law, so I think this is my second part of this process I've been to. And I think the thing that we want to focus on is the defense team side, what is the legal part, right?
Could you speak up, please?
Yes, I could, sorry. It's the legal part, and I think there are several good cases made. In essence, though, you can take specific parts of the code, as Tony's lawyer pointed out, and you can put together a story that says this is okay. But that's, your job is to interpret the laws, right? With the health and safety of the family and the people involved as a primary concern. So they purchased this property back in 25 years ago, right? At that time, the business behind it was a very small business, like it was one Red Barn, a couple of old buildings, fertilizer distribution. Now, as somebody said, it's a major chemical industrial plant. And it's been a cumulative thing. You cannot just point to one thing at a time and say, I think reported this is okay, we're just going to focus on this. It's a cumulative process, right? And part of it is, the town has just, I would say, either subconsciously ignored it or has chosen to avoid it. And I think one of the things that drives some of that behavior is, as people, we try to typically try to avoid conflict, right? You want everybody you think is a good person, they think like us, they want to be like us, you want everybody to be happy. But what happens in those cases, yeah, 80% of the people follow that mode. But then you run into the people that don't care, they're going to do what they want to do because it's their business, it's their, it's their money, right? That's involved, and it's a profit margin in the end. So when you have these kinds of situations, it doesn't come out well for the people that obviously are being affected because the town board that they're relying on for leadership and representation is basically just ignoring or subconsciously avoiding these tough decisions, right? Because it's more comfortable that way. And I kind of, I've seen this twice now. At the previous meeting I was at, which was a different board, but it was very dismissive to the complainants. Like one lady brought up the fact that the Crocker trucks are speeding quite frequently. And she said they're going 80 miles an hour. And then the Crocker employee said, well, that's impossible, they can only go 70, they have a governor. And everybody in the town board said, oh, yeah, that complaint is not valid. But 70 is still much faster than 55. And the reason I'm bringing that up, that's just an example of, again, the leadership dismissing the complaint because it's going to be uncomfortable, right? Actually challenge somebody, is basically by their methodology, they just do what they want because they know no one's going to push back. And until the board or the legal process through the board pushes back, the business, they're going to continue to do what they do, which is, right? They're going to please themselves, they're going to do what they need to do to make money, at the expense of the residences and residential people in that area. So big picture lies, right? It all comes back to leadership. I mean, why are you here? Why, there's a lot of land on the Crocker plant, but I noticed some other Crocker employees have built residences there. Why is that? You could have built a plant near the Crocker home, but that's not happening either. And I'm sure, I don't think any of you would sign up to buy land and build your home in that area. Why? For the very reasons that have been raised by the kids in doing. When you're breathing in inorganic dust for days and days and days, for years, it's building up in your lungs. Your body has no way to rid itself of inorganic dust. So you're basically, you're filling your lungs with sand, if you want an analogy, right? That's why coal miners or miners of any kind, even people that handle potash and fertilizer, they wear air protection because it's a hazard. So in the end, their property is now devaluated. All the hard work they put into rehabilitating that property, which has been 25 years of work, because I've watched it happen, and I've laughed at them the whole time because like, why are you doing this? But anyways, it's another story for another time. But it has seriously all been devalued because I think the town has let this thing progress to the point where it's almost like, it's almost unstoppable, which is exactly what they want. They know that once they get going, it's going to be too hard to push back, and they know they don't push back. And I think that's what we've got to stand in there and interpret the law, right? Because the law is not made for every situation. There's gray areas all the time, right? That's why you rely on peers as yourself, leaders as yourself, to help out both sides to be fair. Justice is blind, so you have to treat it like that. But again, so far what I've seen is like there appears to be a little undercurrent here where we want to avoid conflict, and we don't want to get involved, and we'll just let the business do what the business is going to do. Okay, so I'll be down three minutes, so that's my plea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
May I just respond, just wrap it, just for Sharon, who's on as the applicant. So again, that is Cheryl Phillips-Little. I just want to hit on just four brief points in response to all the comments. I just want to open with, again, understanding and appreciating all the comments that have been made. We're here for a very, very limited question, right? So I'll lead with that. It's the limited question of whether or not 18233 applies to this property and this use. One point that was made is, while there's no reason for this exemption, it doesn't make sense that it would apply to agricultural uses but not agricultural-based businesses. There's two reasons that that's not quite right. The first is because that's what the code says, right? 18221, that I quoted earlier, A1, says that agricultural uses and sound agricultural practices are governed by 18233. Later on in that same section of the code, it doesn't attach that to agricultural-based businesses. Well, how does that make sense? And the answer is because agricultural-based businesses are not permitted as a right. They require, they're required to meet criteria to obtain a special use permit. So whereas agricultural uses and sound agricultural practices are permitted as a right with no fetters other than 18233, agricultural-based businesses have to comply with the other special use permit criteria. So that's why that's the case. The second point I make is, there is a statement that the minutes from 2020, 2021 don't reference 182-3333 with respect to whoever took the minutes, and that person may be in the room right now, and I apologize. They don't reference any section of the code. And that's okay, because it's very clear, again, from the language I quoted, that you were looking at what variances, setback variances specifically, needed to apply to this property in light of the fact that it's an agricultural-based business. And you took about six months to get there, and the minutes reflect all of the hard work you did to get to that point. Third out of four, there was a statement that the application in 2020 never mentioned fertilizer, and so nobody knew that Carolina Eastern Crocker was going to be storing fertilizer in those buildings. Respectfully, again, the minutes completely rebut that. There's clear discussion at the approval meeting about how the buildings need to be located closer to the mixer itself for the fertilizer. The planning board meeting minutes, again, the planning board decision, also never challenged. Clearly goes into detailed discussion of the fertilizer. It was very clear from the meetings that were held in 2020 and 2021 what was going in these storage facilities. Lastly, I'd just like to make the point that there was a reference that, well, if this is a gray area, you should side against us in the code. And I would say respectfully that the law is clear that when there is a gray area in the zoning code, and I don't think there is one, because I think you decided this correctly in 2020. But to the extent it is, you think to yourself, you know, you could go either way. Zoning laws are a derogation of common law property rights, and therefore, you decide things in favor of the property owner. And that's just a general principle of law that the New York Court of Appeals and the appellate divisions have applied uniformly to decisions like this. So to the extent you think there's a gray area, and you think you need to revisit this decision that you made in 2020, which again, I would encourage you not to do, and simply say you decided this in 2020 and 2021 and be done with it. So you say you do need to revisit it, you think it may be a gray area, the law is clear that you should find in our favor, it's the property owner seeking the appeal for our use of the property. What I would close with is simply this, that the question of 100 feet, is it too far, too close for storage of fertilizer, putting aside everything else, is the exact same question you confronted in 2020 and 2021 when you decided 30 feet is okay in lieu of 40 feet. You've already answered the exact question and issue before you here. Answering it again only opens you up to another Article 78 procedure. So I'd ask you to simply say, you decided this already, then it'll be avoided for that reason. If you feel the need to answer the question again, you should answer that as you decided before, 18233 does not apply to this use on this property. And unless there's any questions, I think it's worth it.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up? Sharon, a couple quick points. There was nothing, nothing in all of the minutes over that six months that Mr. Fitzgerald, excuse me, referenced, that ever talked about storage of fertilizer in the building within a certain number of feet of a residential property. It wasn't there. This board did not decide this issue. I mean, simply did not decide this issue. What was decided was whether the side yard setback should be the 40 feet or whether they could get a variance for the 30 feet. For the edge of the building, not for what was happening within the building, for the edge of the building. That's what an area variance is. It's a setback to the edge of the building. It's been mentioned twice. Don't side with Mr. Prince because you're buying yourself a lawsuit. I mean, to me, interpret the law, interpret the law for what it is, and don't interpret the law in a way for fear of a lawsuit. Next point is the way the zoning code is supposed to be, supposed to be interpreted, and who it's supposed to be interpreted in favor of. This particular section of the zoning code is clearly, clearly for the protection of neighbors, right? It can't be read any other way except to be for the protection of neighbors. If we're going to look in favor, and I agree there's no gray area there because it's pretty, pretty clear, then you interpret it in favor of the class that was supposed to be protected by the provision. And then finally, I go back to my very first point. And I give Mr. Fitzgerald great credit for this, this churning up of this argument about agricultural practices, agricultural businesses. There is no place within the code, nowhere, that says agricultural businesses are exempt. There's one provision, 182-21, that's been referenced. And that does in fact say that as of right, it's an as of right use, so next to an agricultural, I'm sorry, next to a residential property, if in fact, you know, you have met that 100-foot setback for, you know, for an agricultural practice or for a farm. But the converse of that is not true, because it's said, it's not said anywhere in the code. Can't point to it, haven't pointed to it, that there's any exemption for an agricultural business. You'd be reading that into the code, which is not the job of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I suggest one thing to the board? Again, you've gotten oral arguments from two very fine attorneys. One of the things you could offer to them is a period of time with which they could submit, you know, the proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law, so that you have that in front of you when you make your determination. Again, we've got the benefit of having a court report, but both of these fine attorneys have put forth good arguments tonight. They might like to submit to you in writing. Again, we, I'm trying to protect the record and make sure that you can look at this stuff after the night. My head's really hurt right now. I can only imagine what you guys are doing. It might be nice to have them put their legal arguments in writing, give them, you know, 10 to 14 days. Again, if you close the public hearing, you have 62 days from that, from that closing to render a decision. And I'm not suggesting you need 60, but I do think we want to invite our court reporter to provide us her written record. And I know Mr. Fitzgerald's going to want copies of anything that was submitted tonight, so he has it. You know, I would think if you gave 10 days, two weeks for them to provide that writing to you, and then, again, I don't know how long you guys, whether you want to make your decision in an hour, or if you want to have a night to toss and turn over, come back, and again, have the court reporter and then have their legal writings in front of you.
Yeah, I think it's fair enough to the process. I mean, there's a lot to unpack here. Obviously, this is a very emotional issue as well. And I think if we're going to render an interpretation, that having a summary of the presentations by each attorney.
Is two weeks enough time for both of you?
Could I make just two requests? And Mr. Shavitz may take issue with one of them. One is just a question on, do we know when the transcript will be ready? Not to put the court reporter on the spot.
Whatever you want. If you want expedited, I can do it in a little bit.
What's expedited in your mind? We, we're fine with it two weeks. Do you want to make your findings of fact and conclusions of law?
So my point is going to be this, which is, as the applicant, we have the right to have the last word in terms of responding to things. And if Mr. Shavitz is going to submit what I'm sure will be a detailed, sophisticated attack on our position, we do have the right to respond to that and to be heard on what he submits. So if he submits something, I do want the opportunity to reply to it.
Okay, so let's just say this, you'll simultaneously submit your proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law. You'll simultaneously submit your proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law. You'll each have three days to respond to that. Let's give you a 15 days to be done.
My issue is, is we're both going to wait until the last minute, and then we're both going to critique each other's responses to the last minute. You're right, and I know that has to be it, but the courts are going to be arguing that the applicant does have the right to the final.
You both get to reply.
Are you saying lawyers don't require your statements?
Oh, and I'm fine with that.
Again, I'm giving you two weeks to submit, and she's going to have hers done within a week.
Right, I think that's fine. I have no issue with that.
And again, your reply, you sure reply. You get your reply into his response within five days, years within seven.
That's fine.
Is that fine?
And then, I haven't looked back at the rules. Does, does the town code in fact indicate that the applicant?
It does not. I'd say that the, I don't know, it's the third department and the second department just had a case on this, that the, if the board relies on something that the applicant hasn't had a chance to respond to, it's a due process violation.
Guys, we're going to meet in 30 days. 30 days. To make our decision. Again, 14 days, both of you, put in your findings of fact and conclusions of law. You have five days, you have seven days to respond to that. And if you take, if you respond to his response, I'm probably not going to close it. You guys have known what I've done since the beginning. You both send me a letter, I immediately send your letter to the other side. I want you guys to be well informed. And again, I want my board to be well informed. This is an important decision. I want everyone to be fully guided so that we're making our decisions based upon the facts of the law.
And so the process going forward then is we can come back to a public hearing?
No, no. We would just, just a regular meeting. We would have to be open to the public. You'll probably have a round table, although that table's not round, but our backs will be to the public, and we're going to work on our decision. I think they're probably going to provide our decision.
Can we invite them if we have questions to answer?
Now, probably once you guys make that motion to close the public hearing, the comments are done. You're going to get arguments, but you're not going to get factual comments like you've gotten tonight. So if you have other things that you're looking for, if there's something else you want from these people tonight, now's your time to ask the question again. Here's sort of where the judge asks the witness a couple of questions after the attorneys are all done, and everybody gets nervous.
Mr. DeTale, we both submitted, they submitted their, you know, appeal with a brief. We submitted a response. I would propose that maybe, maybe this is what you were suggesting, that what we provide is essentially a draft decision.
Correct.
Right, okay. A draft decision.
Two weeks. They're finding the fact, who's in the draft.
Right, and then, and then based upon that, you know, it could be amended once we've seen each other's.
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's also important to remind the public here too that, you know, we don't make our laws, we don't enforce, we interpret, or we grant relief for people that come in with sheds that want a setback, you know, kind of very simple, you know, run-the-mill stuff. This is different. This is a lot different. I came in here tonight thinking I could make a motion tonight, but after hearing the arguments and with the sensitive nature of this and the long history of this, I think it's proven that we, you know, have the attorneys provide us with kind of an executive summary, so to speak, so that we can, people look at this. But the point I wanted to make there is I think, like we already did this at the opening of the meeting, you know, all we're being asked to do are a very, very narrow band, is to look at the code section and basically say, doesn't fit this particular violation. And that's it. We're not looking at all the other stuff that's going on here, just that one piece, and that's all we can do.
The only problem you have is all that other stuff sort of enters into that decision.
Sure does.
And you guys have made wonderful arguments about that, hopefully.
But as core, that's what we have to look at, core, correct?
So two weeks for them to submit their findings of fact and conclusion of law, another seven days, five for you and seven for Matt to make his, and then we'll come back here in 30 days and try to make a decision. And it's going to be a work session, and there will be no public. But you can make the motion to close the public hearing. Oh, I see someone has their hand up. I didn't know if you wanted to read it or not.
I don't know if this article has been given to the board. And it is about the Winston-Salem fertilizer fire that happened about four and a half years ago.
Okay, you can, you can give us that, we can.
I'd be happy to do that. And I happen to know quite a great deal about it and how very serious it was and is still. And I think that the amount of people that are living around this plant, it's very, very similar to the Winston-Salem. So there are, there are several, there are several pages, and they need to be read, and there is lots on the internet about it.
Did you ask for a motion?
I did.
So I'll move that because close the public hearing.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor.
Do you guys want a set at night for that work session?
We're just, yeah, just a regular meeting. We're going to, we're going to open up our regular meeting schedule ledgers right now.
Okay. I'll follow the game.
What is the date of that?
There were all that.
No, we won't, we won't be. Okay, we'll open up our regular scheduled meeting. Does everybody have a copy of the minutes from the last meeting?
Mike, can I ask one question quick?
We, this needs to be on the.
Got nothing to do with it. I just, if I have some concerns on some things that I see happening in town lives, who do I approach or how do I approach?
That's the person right there. He's a zoning and code enforcement officer. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve minutes? Second? All in favor.
I'm abstaining because I didn't have the time for it. But you don't need my help.
No, we don't need you, Phil. We got enough. Okay, new business is Carolina Eastern Crocker. Based on everything that we've discussed tonight, does somebody want to make a motion to table this to the 18th of August?
I hope that we table this issue to the 18th of August.
Okay, a second on that?
Second.
All in favor. It will be the 18th of August. Same time, 7 o'clock.
What's the date?
18th of August, 7 o'clock.
You weren't seen on vacation. You are.
Okay, okay.
I wish I was there.
That's it we've got for new business. Does somebody want to make a motion to close the meeting?
Who's that major?
Second? All in favor. Okay. Thank you.